Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the City Council briefing session of the Advanced Agenda for November 15th, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Present.
I don't know that I can hear her, but here.
Okay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. Mr. Ormsby, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Council President and members of the City Council. On the administrative session for next week on the consent agenda, the first item proposed is a value blanket for ammunition for 2022, and Jackie McConnell from the Police Department is here to brief this item.
I'm having issues with my video. I think you can see me. So we are, we need to purchase ammunition for 2022. We put in for ammunition, need to purchase ammunition pretty much every year, and we do our best to determine the amount of ammunition we need just based on previous year's purchases. This year, we're really trying to get ahead of this due to the cost of ammunition continuously going up as well as the fact that it is taking a long time to get our ammunition orders. So we are going to be purchasing ideally from two different vendors. One will sell us our duty ammunition and the other one will sell us our practice ammunition. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jackie. The next item is a proposed 10-year.
Sorry, sorry, Councilwoman Ormsby. I have a comment. So what we didn't say was that 75% of the ammunition is going to be going for practice, the other 25 for, in the field work. The other piece I asked was, and I think this is important, I asked if not live ammunition could be used for practice, in other words, blanks. And I was told, no, it's not the same, and that you need to be practicing with live ammunition. So I get that. As much as I have this angst over guns and ammunition, I want to make sure that police are really well-trained so that when they shoot, they shoot straight and they hit the target and not an innocent bystander. So I have a conflict, but I understand why this is important, and I want to make sure the public does, too. We've asked the questions that we needed to ask and that this is, this is necessary for us to have the police do their job. So, thanks.
It is important, and thank you, Councilwoman.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, the next proposed item on the agenda is an interdepartmental agreement proposed between Public Works and the Parks Department, and Marlene Feist, our Director of Public Works and Utilities, is here to brief this item.
Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, Council. This item is a 10-year interdepartmental agreement between Public Works and Parks that would emphasize water conservation efforts. Public Works would invest $250,000 a year in Parks projects that are designed to achieve water savings, allow for better management of Parks landscaping, and also support the long-term needs of the water system. Parks will serve as our example of how water can be saved and still have beautiful spaces, and the city is, you know, supporting that through these investments. It builds on a pilot project where we've had success in the past in this area.
Any questions or comments from Marlene? Thanks, Marlene. The next item is a proposed memorandum of understanding between Spokane County, the Sheriff's Office, and the City Police Department regarding the WASP grant funds for regional mental health response, and there'll be an SBO later in the meeting that's also related to this item. But Major Eric Olson from the Police Department is here to brief this item.
Thank you, Mike, and good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. I'm asking for the passage of an MOU, approval of an MOU between ourselves and Spokane County Sheriff's Office. They have been deemed the actual grant holder. We're sub-recipient of them in support of our Behavior Health Grant. It will help fund six SPD full-time employees. That would be one sergeant, one grant coordinator, position coordinator, as well as four full-time officers. This is a two-year grant that will run through retroactively from back in July 1st of this year through June, the end of June of 2022. Any questions from the councilmembers? And, Mr. Ormsby, would you like me to stick around for the SBO or do that now?
If it's all right with the council, why don't we let Major Olson do the SBO now, which will come later in the agenda related to this?
Right. So I'm going to ask for the passage of an SBO that actually allows the money from the grant to be allocated since we received it this year after the budget cycle, to be added to the budget to pay for those six SPD full-time employees for, I believe, through this year and probably into the next year as well, and to get that into the budget for next year. Any questions? Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, Ms. Ormsby.
Thanks, Eric. Next, we have a industrial pretreatment program, which has been discussed at a previous meeting but is back again, and Raylene Jeanette, although I don't see her on my screen, is hopefully here to brief this item.
Yes, councilmembers. This is Raylene Jeanette. This is for the industrial pretreatment program. This is a public rule. Oh, actually, this is the multi-jurisdiction, sorry. This is a multi-jurisdiction, a lot like we did with Airway Heights. This is with Spokane County, and this is just an agreement between the two parties to coordinate our pretreatment efforts.
Any questions for Raylene? Okay, thanks, Raylene. Next, we have the proposed acceptance of a grant from the Traffic Safety Commission for Municipal DUI Court, and Seth Heckenberg, a coordinator with the therapeutic courts, is here with us from Municipal Court to brief this item. Seth?
Good afternoon, Council. Yeah, I'll just keep it really brief. This is just our third extension of the grant we originally got in 2019 from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission. It's going to be $50,000 over a year. $38,000 that's going to be used for UA testing, and then $12,000 for travel. That $12,000 is actually our original travel budget. However, COVID has been delaying our ability to travel over and over again, so it was delayed again another year, so they just moved it forward to us for this year. And then the other $38,000 is for UA testing. That'll give us about roughly a year's worth of UA testing at our current client, which is about 25 people throughout the DUI court. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Seth. The next item is a contract renewal for the repair of tires for Fleet, and Rick Giddings, our Director of Fleet Services, is here with us this afternoon. Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Ormsby. Good afternoon, Council. Fleet Services would like to renew the tire services contract with Wingfoot Commercial Tire Systems LLC for one year, using Washington State Contract 00519 for a yearly amount of $150,000. Any questions?
Okay. Not seeing any. Thanks, Rick. The next item is a proposed contract renewal for police uniforms for 2021 and 2022, and Jennifer Hammond from the Police Department is here to brief this item.
A contract extension for the Galls uniforms for Police Department, $100,000 per year, $200,000 total.
Any questions for Jennifer? In the last two items on the consent agenda, the first is the report of the mayor for approved obligations involving Parks and Library as well as the General Fund, and finally, the City Council meeting minutes for the meetings to be filled in prior to next week's meeting will be, would be considered. And we go to the legislative session, and under special budget ordinances, the first special budget ordinance relates to the Solid Waste Fund, and Chris Aver from Solid Waste Department is here to brief this item. Chris?
Good afternoon. Today, I'm seeking approval for a special budget ordinance in the amount of $1,875,330 due to increased manufacturing and shipping lead times as a result of the pandemic. Orders for components for the great systems, induced draft fans, and turbine must be placed in 2021 to ensure arrival by the 2022 outage at the waste synergy facility. The funding for these components were included in the proposed 2022 capital maintenance budgets for the facility. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. The next item is the one Major Olson already briefed regarding the Behavior Health Unit. The next proposed SBO is for also the Public Safety and Judicial Grant, but relates to safety equipment for the police hostage negotiation team, and Major Mike McNabb from the Police Department is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council President, City Council. Thank you for having me. We are looking to get access to $69,340.74 to purchase 14 personal safety equipment kits for our hostage negotiation team so they can be closely embedded with SWAT teams on barricaded and hostage-type situations for negotiation purposes to bring incidents to a peaceful surrender.
Any questions for Major McNabb? Not seeing any.
Yes.
Oh, there is. Okay.
Mr. Ormsby, you're ignoring me today.
Well, I can't see your face, so I can't see waving your hand. Sorry about that.
That's all right. So I just wanted to point out to council that many of these hostage situations are domestic violence, and so those of us who are concerned about domestic violence should be in support of this. The last thing we want to see is an unhappy ending. So thank you, Major McNabb, for briefing this, but I just want to make sure we are all aware of that one fact. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And the final SBO is for a transfer of funds within the General Fund. We were able, in the prosecutor's office, to realize savings on the Assistant Prosecutor line, which is fortunate because of the number of prosecutions this year that involve non-English-speaking defendants, and the were required, the cities required to provide interpreters for those defendants out of fairness and understanding of the system, and so there would be a decrease in appropriation for the Assistant Prosecutor and an increase in the appropriation for interpreter costs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. Okay? Shift now, then, to resolutions and final reading ordinances. The first resolution is an update to Appendix A regarding the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility, and Raylene Jeanette is still with us to brief this item.
Yes, thank you, councilmembers. This is for our industrial pretreatment. This is, we're administering the regulations to check the workers and the treatment processes. These fees are going to be updated in public rule to recoup the operating costs for 2022. They are higher than the previous fees in the line of expense. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Raylene. And now we move to the next two, the next items are presented by Eldon Brown. One relates to modifying the retail water service area for the city, and the second relates to the extension of a development agreement, and Eldon is with us to present both of these items.
Good afternoon, Council. I'll see if I can share my screen here for these two parcels out in the West Plains that we're trying to modify the retail water boundary for.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, these two parcels in purple are basically out here. Hallet Road is the actual parcel on the north, or the street on the north side. Thomas Mallon is on the west side, which is a little bit to the side of the screen here. Anyway, the first parcel, you can see in purple there, it's got the parcel line through it, it's a 10-acre parcel, and then we have the second one, which is 20, as you can see on the map here.
Eldon, we are seeing the screen, but we're not seeing the screen that you're pointing at. We're just seeing a snapshot of Spokane.
Well, so you're not seeing the...
We're not seeing the parcel.
It says I'm sharing it to you.
We, we're just seeing like a map of Spokane. It includes the parcels, but it's the whole city. It's not zeroing in on the individual parcels.
Let's see if we can back it up here again. Can you see this map here of the city in here?
Yeah, I see a map that you can see Riverside State Park and the airport.
Yeah, let me, let me back up here. I had trouble with this map the last time we tried to show it, too. Just going to back out of a second here and see if we can bring it back up and share it. Just a minute here to bring it back up here.
Um, yeah, that's, yeah, this looks a little different. Yep.
Okay, I think we're getting closer here.
Yeah.
Can you see the purple in there now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Sorry for the delay here. Okay, these two parcels, the one to the left is a 10-acre parcel, and the one to the right's 20, and we're in the vicinity on the south side of I-90, out here. The top boundary is Hallet Road, and we have Thomas Mallon Road over here to the west. And here, so the applicant is actually trying to develop this 30 acres into a low-density residential in the county, which gives them up to eight units per acre. I think they're intent to put 132-lot subdivision in there. As you can kind of see down along the southwest corner run here, we have sewer and water that would come into the westernmost parcel towards the bottom, and we do have sewer and water at the, in Tom, in Hallet Road at the top in there, which is available to provide service to these two parcels. We did run this through a consistency review through the county, or through our, excuse me, our water department, and they actually evaluated whether we do have waters available in timely and reasonable manner. We do have water available in sewer in two locations, so it's right there. All they need to do is extend it through the properties. We do have sufficient water rights for it. We did run a capacity analysis on this, too, and we do have sufficient capacity in that system out there to provide sewer and water to these two parcels, and this is consistent with our comprehensive plan. These two parcels are within the UGA boundary, but they're outside the retail water service boundary, so we're just asking to modify that boundary to include these two parcels. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I had a question. Just, just to the left, as we look at the screen, there's a bunch of lots platted. Are those houses there currently or just lots, empty lots?
Yeah, those are lots that are actually being platted as we speak, so there are houses going in. I think you can see the footprint of some buildings up there, just above it, towards the top.
Are, are we serving them with water and sewer or someone else serving them?
Yes, and those are ones that are previously been within our boundary on here, so we are providing sewer and water to those, and that is the intent of this developer is to turn around and build plat in here, like I say, for about 132 lots to actually provide sewer and water to the, these two parcels.
Okay.
And they are right adjacent to the existing UGA boundary and also to our retail water boundary, but they are just outside the retail water boundary.
Okay.
So any other questions?
Go ahead and just volunteer. We can't see everyone, so go ahead and...
Hi, Eldon. What is the blue? Is that outside the UGA?
That's just our, yes, that is outside the UGA. That's in the future service boundary, but just outside the UGA, or just outside the retail water boundary.
And what is the zoning that they would, are they consistent with the city Spokane zoning for the size of the lots?
Pretty consistent. Ours is four through 10 for a single-family residential. This is low-density residential in the county, which is one through eight, so it's pretty consistent.
One through eight?
Yep.
Which is one house per acre?
If they so chose to go there, they can go up to eight. We don't have a minimum on ours. I mean, we got four through 10, and I shouldn't say we don't have a minimum, but that's, so it is, they can do less, but they are choosing right now out of those 30 acres, what I've seen, is they're looking at 132 housing units out there, which...
So three houses?
It'd be 30 types, it'd be about six.
Okay.
Or, excuse me, about four to five is what it would be, not six.
And then is there any other requirements? Do they build this out to city SPACs with roads, sidewalks, street trees, stormwater? Since this is supposed to go into the city in the future, is this being built out to our city regulations?
This would be one, yeah, this would be one that would be consistent with our city regulations. It's right adjacent to our developments out there, and when we review their plat application, that's what we will be looking for, is if they build everything to pretty much the city standards. I'd have to check to see if this is in that, in the, one of the JPAs, which I think it is in the county, I'd have to look at it, but they have been actually building pretty much everything in our UGA boundaries out there, for the most part, consistent with city standards, but that is something we look at as part of their plating application.
And we could condition that if it wasn't correct?
Yeah, we actually do recommend that to the county hearing examiner every time they do a plat in the county to be quite truthful, so...
Well, that might be something council might want to consider in the future is to condition it since it's supposed to be potentially part of the future city. My other question, it'll still be my last one. When do you anticipate the bulk of the water extension requests will be coming forward in the regular cycle? Does that start in June of 2022?
Typically, we get them towards the end of this year and then try to have hearings on them, you know, in like, say, January through March of next year is normally when we get them. That's been our schedule we've been kind of on.
So, but we usually look at them all together, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, we do. Yep. We didn't have anything that I could see that actually said we couldn't process one separately, and this one did come in just as we were getting ready to process these other 11 about three months ago, but we didn't want to slow down and back up and do all the reviews and everything necessary to hold the other 11 up, so that's why it's coming in by itself.
Well, I'll make a motion, if I may, I'm Council President, to defer this until the others come forward so we can take a look at it in a holistic manner in the regular cycle.
Second, this is Lori.
Been moved and seconded to defer until the regular process discussion.
This is Karen. Can I ask a question with Eldon?
Please.
Sure.
If we defer this, does that complicate, with this particular project, does that complicate any deadlines or anything they might have that, that needs to be moving along, or do you know?
I'm sure the developer's just trying to move ahead to beat the market conditions that are out there today, so I'm sure they're trying to move it along as far as any city deadlines. I'm not aware that we're impacting any of our deadlines.
And so, again, if we were to hold this, to add that to the batch of others that we'll be considering, how long will that be down the road?
Typically, we wouldn't get the rest of them until the end of the year, so it might be March or April of next year before we actually would come back before you for council action on these.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, I'm just hearing Elizabeth Shadell in my, I think, within the last week or so, we've been talking about the water plan and how the recommendation is to take a more holistic look when these decisions are made as opposed to one at a time, because we want to be pretty thoughtful about where the potential expansion of the city might be, and in a way, that's sort of what we do when we do commit water and sewer that far out of our city limits is we're making a commitment to expand the city there without really having that full discussion. So that's why I'm supporting this deferral so it could be taken all at once next spring.
Other council commentary, and feel free to volunteer because I can't see everyone.
Council President?
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so strongly oppose a deferral on this, and I do know that the property owner has been trying to move forward on this since he was delayed many months ago. To me, I, I think it'd be insane to defer this. There's 136 houses, and we need to be addressing our housing crisis. I can't believe I have to say this every single week. We have a housing crisis. We need housing. Here's 136 houses ready to go as soon as we approve the access to water, but we're going to hold it off for six months? It's been four and a half months since we approved a housing action plan, and we've seen goose egg. So we should do everything we can to see new housing getting built, and this is a great opportunity. It's adjacent to all of the infrastructure that's already there. The developer, obviously, is the one paying to put in the additional infrastructure to connect to it, and it's inside the urban growth boundary. It makes no sense, frankly, that this even has to go through the retail water service area process, but here we are, and let's just get it through, get it approved, so that we can get the housing built. That should be our first priority.
Councilmember Cathcart, this is Karen Stratton. Are any of those homes, do we know, are any of those homes being built? Are they within that affordable category? Are any of those homes, do we know, are any of those homes being built, are they within that affordable category?
I, they're, they're all single families, so they're, they're going to be market rate, fee simple market rate. I don't, I don't know that they're building rentals, I, I, I can't say for sure, but my understanding is it's single-family, fee simple.
Other council commentary?
So Councilmember Wilkerson, so I hear Councilmember Cathcart's argument, but we are talking three months. Um, Eldon, did you say, you said April, Sheldon, what was it, March, April?
Usually we come back before you in the March-April timeline of the year with the ones we've gathered up from the previous year. So I've only got one other one that's, uh, just in the process of being submitted right now, so I don't know how many I'll get, but, uh, on this particular one, I really wouldn't have any new information to provide you five months down the line to it, it would just be more of them in a similar circumstance, I think, so...
But March of 2022?
Yep, that'd be correct.
Other...
Council President, Council President, this is Lori.
Hello.
My video's not working, I apologize, um...
Go ahead.
I can see myself, though. I, I don't know that Eldon knows this answer to the question I'm about to ask, do, does, what are providing water, are they also connecting to our sewer system, or are they going to be, they are? They're not going to be using septic?
No.
Okay, thanks.
You can kind of see on our map here, the blue and red lines that we have right adjacent to it. The red is the sewer and the blue's water. So they do have sewer and water at two locations right adjacent to this plat, so... And it is instantly the UGA boundary, so it's pretty much compliant with most of our regulations as far as us being allowed to extend, or they'll be doing the extension of the utilities into their plat, but we do have service available to them right on the periphery.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Wilkerson?
Just a question for Eldon, so we do normally take these one time of the year, because we did most of them back in August, July, August, but it is allowable to take them out of our cycle, as you said?
Yeah, we didn't have anything, that had been kind of our policy that we'd been trying to adhere to. And like you say, this particular one came in right in the middle of our study sessions that we had for the eleven that we ran back through July. It came in there, and to slow those eleven down, we would have had to back up and actually do some more work on this one to get it ready to go. So we chose to process the other eleven, and then we decided we ought to try to address this one, since it did come in pretty much. I think it came in actually in around April of this year, so it's been a while, it's been out there. So that's why we're trying to actually address it now.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Hey, Eldon, how many of those eleven came in, in nineteen, and then didn't get heard in twenty, and were delayed until earlier this year?
Actually, most of them, I would guess, two-thirds of them.
So we had no qualms about changing the process in twenty-twenty, but I guess now there's a different situation, so, thank you.
Yep.
Any other commentary? Councilmember Stratton?
So Eldon, so does that mean, so this developer has been on this since 2019, and we haven't, no?
No.
No, this one actually came in, like I say, I think in about April of this year, April of twenty-one, so...
Okay, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Wilkerson?
So just clarity, Councilmember Mom is asking to defer, does she get stay for how long?
Until the regular cycle.
Till the regular cycle, okay.
All right.
And part of my reasoning is that, if I may, council president, if we, it's kind of a precedent thing. If we are going to take one-offs on these, I just find that very difficult to make a, a, a decision when we're supposed to look at the whole process, and how we deliver water. And when we do it one at a time, we don't look at the whole impacts. And we're in the mid, we're discussing this with the water plan, also going forward, and to provide water to an area that could do one acre lots, that doesn't seem to fit with our housing goals. So those are the kinds of discussions we should be having with all of the other, um, this is potentially the future city of Spokane. So, so that's why I think we have, need to have those discussions when we're looking at everything in a basket. So I, I think we can, we can do that in a few months, or you guys can in a few months, that's my request.
Any other discussion? All right, um, Eldon, can you take down your screen so I can see everyone at the same time? Great, thank you so much. All right, all, all those in favor of deferring to the regular cycle in 2022, say aye and raise your hand, so I can, and...
Aye.
Aye.
Three, and Councilmember Kinnear, I know we can't see you, are you an aye or a nay?
I'm an aye, yes, I'm an aye.
Okay, that's far, and those opposed, uh, say nay and raise your hand. And I'm going to be a nay as well, so, all right, so four to three, it's deferred for the next cycle. Although it sounds like, hopefully, um, there's not that many people applying, so we could do that next cycle as soon as possible in 2022. Okay, we're on to the next resolution, Mr. Ormsby? Oh, and, and it's Eldon Brown again, yeah, okay, Eldon.
Yes, this is the, uh, development agreement for Vista, the Vista's Act Beacon Hill.
Yeah, and this particular agreement, uh, was actually first, uh, extended, I think, in December of 2016. We originally had the Vista's Beacon Hill plat was approved in December fourteenth of 2005. It went along for a ten-year timeline at that time, where they could actually build within that timeline, and we had a one-year extension to December fourteenth of 2016. Developer still didn't have the infrastructure, financing set to go for the infrastructure, and primarily the water system. And so that agreement was extended until December fourteenth of 2021. And again, we find ourselves in the situation at that time where the, the infrastructure just wasn't in place, financing really wasn't in place to build the infrastructure. And so the developer's back in here again, asking to extend that thing for another five-year timeline to December fourteenth of 2026. We do think the developer has the financing in place at this time to finish building the water booster station out there in our interim reservoir, to actually make this thing a viable project. So we are back, asking to extend that actual timeline further for another five-year extension. But we, developer is really kind of set to go, he's got plans in here to us to actually get these things approved and built. So we finally think it's viable, the market, uh, conditions look right to actually see this happen. So we're here before you to actually ask for an extension of this agreement for another five-year timeline. Be happy to answer any questions.
Eldon, Betsy here.
Yeah.
So this started back in 2005, and now we're at 2021. Has there, or have you or anyone done an analysis of the standards when it was first approved, or what the standards are now, or would that be a condition that we could put in place? Just help me understand and walk me through that.
Yeah, that's a good question. And originally, when this thing was approved back in 2005, the interior roads in there were going to be private roads. And that's the one primary difference I see between then and now. And the developers actually came back to us and wants to build public roads, not private roads in there. And right now, the, the agreement would actually approve the original hearing examiner decision with these extensions, but I know the developer's going to come forth here, and he would be, he's totally amenable to, uh, building public roads in this thing, that's his intent. And when we have this on the docket for next Monday on there, I think he's prepared to testify, and he'd be happy to amend anything we have to say that he would build public roads instead of private roads. So that's the primary difference we have in regulations from then to now, as far as, uh, infrastructure.
Council President?
Um, yeah.
Thank you, um, so will it be amenable to looking at, um, bringing money to STA to provide services for bus services up there? Or what happens when a bunch of families move in and we need to build a new school? Is he interested in working with the school district to provide funding for that? Because I think what we forget is that when we build on the outskirts of our city, it's not just the housing that, and the roads that need to be done, it's all of the other infrastructure that goes along with that. And that's why I just am not a fan of us, uh, you know, developing on the outskirts of our, of our city, because then STA is going to have to raise more funds to provide services out there, and then we're going to have to build more schools, and we're going to have to do all sorts of stuff, it's not just the roads. So, um, that's just, you probably don't have the answer to that, Eldon, it was more just rhetorical for us to contemplate.
I will say that there've been a lot of discussions about sites for schools and this, that, along with development. Not sure that's all been pinned down at this point in time. Like I say, we've been trying to get the development off the ground, getting the infrastructure up there. But your points are well taken, certainly it will put, uh, it'll stretch everything out there as far as, to our system, as far as schools and utilities and everything that goes with it, so those are all...
Yeah, absolutely, and with STA looking at maybe raising rates for bus riders, it's unfair for the people who actually have to use the bus services and pay taxes, uh, to then have to extend the bus services out there for people who live on the outskirts of our city, when we have plenty of areas to develop, uh, say on Hamilton Avenue, there's a lot of empty lots there that could be really good, uh, apartment complexes or things like that, that's right on bus services already, so...
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, thank you, uh, I guess just a couple things, so on this, the original request to have this extension approved came uh, over a year ago, thirteen months ago in fact, and in December, we were told it was being reviewed, it was going to move forward, and nothing really happened. And it took months and months of, of, uh, I think the property owner, the developer, trying to work with the administration to, to get it to, to this point, so we get the extension approved. And as was pointed out, the situation there is very different from what it has been. There's a, a new partner that's involved in the development, there's, uh, a lot more capital in place to move forward with, uh, the infrastructure that's necessary. They have already made substantial investment, uh, in the area up there, they've, uh, blown out the roads, they're, they're installing the water. I mean, they're moving ahead, so I, I, you know, the idea of, of not necessarily approving this would not really make a lot of sense. There's sixteen hundred, potentially, when this is all said and done, sixteen hundred new housing units that are going to go in there. It's a mix of multifamily, as it's currently zoned, as well as single-family. And it is going to be an amazing urban village, uh, in our community. It's going to provide all sorts of investment and, uh, support for businesses in, in downtown Hilliard and Bemis. I mean, this is going to be an amazing addition to Northeast Spokane. It's sad that it's taken as long as it has, there are some things, yes, the developer could have and should have done differently, but there's also some things the city should have not obstructed on over the years as well. So there's a lot of faults, a lot of blame, a lot of issues, uh, but to simply, you know, not approve an extension on this to, to get the housing that we need wouldn't make sense. Uh, and as has been pointed out, the only issue would be the roads, and those are already agreed to by the developer to build those to public standard, so, um, I, there really is no reason that I can see not to move forward with this and get that housing built in Northeast where we need it, and where the investment will do a whole lot of good for a whole lot of people.
Any other commentary?
Yes, Council President Lori?
Yes.
Am I still not being seen?
No, we just see your picture, so, go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm here, um, so Eldon indicated that the roads were the only thing that were different, but I would want to know that they were built to a standard that included sidewalks, that included complete streets. And I think we need to take just a little bit of time and look to see and ask, perhaps ask staff if there are other things that we're missing, because this is the, this has been going on since 2005, things have changed. I want to make sure, and I agree they've waited a long time, there've been mistakes on both sides, but let's make sure that we are building something that is to our standard right now, and not, and if we have to add something to the developer agreement to make sure that happens, then we have a couple of weeks or whatever it takes to learn what those are, rather than rush into this and get something that is not going to be compatible with the rest of, of the city and have this one-off. So that would be my request, is that let's just take some time, Eldon, if, if somebody could give us an analysis of what else we're, we're looking at, then we are making an informed decision.
Yeah, I've just not aware, we're looking through the original hearing examiner's decision, that we really have anything much different as far as the infrastructure goes. They were looking at private utilities along with private roads originally, and now they're looking at building public infrastructure, which would include sewer and water and the road systems. So from our engineering side of it, at least, uh, things are pretty well, would be consistent with our today's standards as to what they're looking at building.
Eldon, the other thing you mentioned when we were briefing at committee, I think, was the multifamily, that they wouldn't be able to do the multifamily. So this would allow them to do the multifamily, is that...
Yeah, it continues that original hearing examiner's decision that allowed for the multifamily development, that's correct. So that is one thing that they're trying to preserve as part of this too.
Council President Lori again. Can we, I'd like to make a motion to, to put this back on Pies, and see if we can, um, work all these things out so that everyone is satisfied, instead of having a split vote on this, have it more of a, maybe a six-one, maybe we can get a school in there for Councilmember Lori, uh, and for me. So if we could put this back on Pies, that would be my motion.
If I could just interject on that, the only thing...
Second.
Okay, go, go ahead, Mr. Brown, yeah, we got the second.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt there, but the only thing we were trying to do is make sure if the agreement is to go through, we're just trying to make sure it's done before that expiration date of December fourteenth of 2021. So that would be my only issue that we're trying to address, one way or the other.
So I have a couple comments coming in a minute, but just to clarify, so is your motion to defer this from the fifteenth to November twenty-second, which is the meeting after Pies?
Yes.
Okay, and is that acceptable with you, Councilmember Mom, as a secondary?
Well, we have the ability to take something off the agenda and put it on a, um, a council committee, in which I, I supported that. So, I mean, the, the motion might need to be changed for the date.
Well, Councilmember Kinnear, I think, agreed to make the motion to defer it until...
I'm, I'm asking to put it back on committee, the first thing. Then presuming that we, that it comes off committee, that, then it can go on the twenty-second, but if there are still issues with it, I, we could go back to the twenty-second, but it may not make it through the twenty-second.
Okay, I understand now, yeah, I'll agree.
Okay, so there's a motion to have it heard at Pies on the twenty-second, and come back to the legislative agenda on the twenty-second for further action, if any. Um, and I saw, first I saw Councilmember Cathcart, and then Councilmember Stratton.
Well, I, I just, I guess I'm wondering, so the comment was made, maybe we can get them to build a school. I mean, how many developments have we imposed building a school on as a requirement? Has that been a requirement of any development in the history of Spokane? Eldon, do you, do you know?
You know, only if it's a large enough development in here to warrant it. And they have actually talked about schools up here, once you get more of the units that you talked about, of the sixteen hundred, but right now, I think the impetus was really to get started, is what we're trying to do, so...
Okay, well, I just, I don't understand, I guess, why we're deferring, I, 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 I mean, they are ready to go, they're ready to put some sticks in the ground soon, and, and I just, to hold that up further potentially, I just don't understand where, where we're going with that, so I, I, I'm going to not support the deferral.
Councilmember Stratton?
I just want to remind everybody, or at least for me, we have been dealing with this particular, um, issue since I came on council, it's, it's up and down and back and forth. And I really think that, um, there are some instances where we've not been very fair to this developer. Um, and, and I feel badly about that. I think that, you know, he has jumped through the hoops, he's worked with us, he has a plan for housing which is so desperately needed over in Northeast Spokane. I know there have been discussions that he was open to, um, looking at educational, um, entities in that area. I just, I think we need to just stop a minute and think about this, and how... a minute and think about this. And how, how many more times are we gonna stand in the way and not let this go forward? We always have set it back, we've delayed it. It's frustrating for me, and I can imagine, I can't imagine how frustrating it is for the developer. So, I'm, I'm gonna oppose this and just say, it's housing, it's an opportunity. He's been at this forever, he's worked with the city forever. Um, I don't know what the issues are with this particular person, but it, it just doesn't feel fair to me. So, I'm not gonna, I, I, I think we need to get on with this, get it moving, and get that housing underway for an area that needs it desperately.
Councilmember Burke and then Councilmember Mom.
You're on mute, but I think Councilmember Mom was first, so.
Okay, Councilmember Mom and then Councilmember Burke.
So, for me, the issue is, uh, that I do think this development has been treated differently. The city has bent over backwards trying to make this work. Year after year, extension after extension, it's a very challenging environment. The road, the steepness, the lack of water, the lack of services. This was a really tough, tough development. And I have seen, over my years, even before I came on here, extension after extension, and again, allowing things to happen, trying to find funding for, for this and that. I've never seen the carpet laid out for a developer more than this. And I've had lengthy conversations with the developer. Great guy, what they do up there is great. But for whatever reason, this has been a huge challenge. And out of fairness to the other developers and the, the planning staff, I think that this development needs to be brought into the current century because it is so old. So, I do support the deferral to take it to Pies and have a good planning analysis of what it would be if this was to go forward with our current codes. With, are there sidewalks? Are there street trees? Yes, public streets, but what does that mean? Are the widths the same? Are they different? I don't know. And if this council decides that they want to approve this and keep this rolling so they don't have to reapply, they can still build, they just have to reapply under current codes. Maybe the condition is that they don't have to reapply, but they do need to follow current code. Because if they do wanna have public streets, that's the right thing to do. And that, to me, is being fair. So, I would like to have that analysis. It was just a couple of weeks and I bet the planning staff could provide that, so all council can be informed. If we extend this for another time, which is an extreme extension, this is so old, this plat, we've had many changes to the P U D, it seems to be the right thing to do and the fair thing to do. Thanks for listening.
Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanna, um, go off of a little bit what Councilmember Mom said. Um, this, to me, has nothing to do with the individual developer. It's the actual development in the area where it is. I have always been a no vote to extending water past our U G A or our, um, or water boundary. I've always been a no vote to building, um, infrastructure that's on the outskirts of our city. Because like I said, every person who moves in there is paying the same tax dollars that every person in the, the, the heart of the city is paying. But it costs twice or three times as much for infrastructure for someone living on the outskirts of our city. And so, it's unfair for the rest of our city to have to pay for that. We're all paying the same taxes on our, on the infrastructure. We all pay the same taxes for our bus services, for all of that. But on the outskirts, it costs way more because we have to develop more bus routes and more services for those people and more schools. And so, I will always be, uh, for the limited time I have left on this council, a no vote on, um, housing infrastructure that's on the outskirts of our city. We have tons of plots and areas and, you know, our new, uh, housing plan has stated that we're going to work on our, um, zoning and things like that. And I think that's how to go about it. We don't plot people on the outskirts of our city and hope that they don't drive. And then our roads are much more crowded, and then all we get in our inboxes are emails about traffic, those type of things. Like, there are other ways to go about infrastructure like this. And, and this person has been working on this piece of infrastructure for so long and, uh, wants to use it for something in our city. But in my opinion, it was a bad purchase of a piece of land, and he wants to continue to try to develop on it. And I am not interested in putting people on the outskirts of our city with no services for them if they don't have a car. There's no, there's no bus services there. They'd have to walk miles to get onto a bus. And then a school, and now we're, now we're expecting the school district to bring buses out there? That's gonna cost so much money to provide that to those families there. And we haven't discussed this. This is not a holistic discussion. And so, I'm just, uh, I just don't think it's a smart move for our city to put infrastructure, to put housing on the outskirts.
Councilmember Wilkerson and then Councilmember Cathcart.
Thank you. So, I don't wanna be an obstructionist, and a lot of this is history that I'm unaware of. I'm gonna support the two-week deferral because this is a great opportunity if they bring us the analysis. I'm feeling right now, if we took it to vote, it could possibly go up in flames, and that's not what I like to see. I like to give this a fair shot. And I think two weeks, um, can give us the opportunity to get our questions answered.
Councilmember, and it's just a one-week deferral. It's two weeks from today, but it's a one-week deferral. Uh, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I was just gonna add two, two more things. And so, we've been talking about design and, and what, what it's gonna look like up there. Well, first of all, there's a, gonna be a ton of bike, bike paths. There already are, and that's gonna be a big piece of this. In fact, the, the property owner just donated several acres to the city to expand our parks, um, and recreational capacity up, up in the Beacon Hill area there. Uh, some of them were sold and some of them were actually donated. And so, I mean, this is, this is somebody who cares about the community, cares about the area up there, wants to make this a place that people can live and work and play. And, and it's really, I think, quite amazing what, what could be. But they've hired a top-notch firm out of Colorado to do a lot of the design work. I've seen some images of, of what they're working on, and it's amazing. It's actually really incredible. And so, I, I, I'm not supporting the deferral. I just hope whatever we do isn't gonna kill this project. I mean, if they lose access to multifamily, they lose some of this stuff, we delay them two years. To me, that's just, that's just cruel and unusual. But I guess that's the direction we might go, so.
I'm gonna support the deferral for, it's just a week. It was supposed to be a vote on the fifteenth, there'll be a vote on the twenty-second. I traditionally vote if people need more information, I want them to have that. I, I support the extension, though. So, I just, um, for many reasons that have been listed, in terms of needing housing and particularly some affordable housing in that area. Uh, but everyone's made great points about, um, infrastructure costs and the extra cost of building on the outside of the city. And so, I mean, there's all good points, but, uh, we are in a, in a, in a crisis and a jam. So, I support the extension, but I support the deferral. So, take a vote for the motion to defer, uh, for further consideration on the Pies on the twenty-second of November and, uh, the legislative session on the twenty-second as well. All those in favor indicate by, oh, were you wanting to say something? Or are you voting? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And if you're opposed, nay, raise your hand. All right, so that's a five to two vote in favor of deferring for one week till the twenty-second.
Thank you, council.
Go ahead.
There's one, uh, there's one final, uh, reading ordinance for, proposed for next week, and it's reducing the fees for accessory dwelling units and it, Councilwoman Kinnear's, uh, proposed ordinance. And, and it was discussed last week, and I don't know, Councilwoman Kinnear, if you have more that you would like to add this week.
Uh, just a few things. Um, I did give some, um, misinformation to Councilmember Stratton. And two things, this ordinance doesn't change the regulations around A D Us. What it does is it waives fees. It's gonna be about approximately five thousand dollars per project, depending on what you do. You know, if you outfit your basement with a toilet, of course, that's gonna be a lot less of, of, uh, of a cost to you. But if you're building from scratch, you would save about five thousand dollars. But what we did not do is this is not exclusive to, uh, low income. So, if you live within half a mile of a center or a corridor, a context area or downtown zone or a C, C-three zoning overlay, then you qualify for this incentive. And again, you can build an A D U anywhere you wish. This is just saying that within these areas, you will get, if you apply, you will get a waiver, a temporary fee waiver. And it does sunset in two thousand and twenty-four so that we can evaluate whether this is working, if it's worth it, and adjust it if necessary.
Any other questions or discussions for this, uh, proposed ordinance? Okay, then finally, I would just, uh, council, go to the last item on the agenda, and that is the, um, continued hearing from today to next week until the budget is adopted by the city council. And, uh, the hea- hearing will be continued, uh, next week as well, and, uh, I guess up till the twenty-second of November. Uh, that council president and members of the council is the consent, or is the advanced agenda for next week's meeting.
Is there a motion to adopt the advanced agenda as modified for November fifteenth?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the advanced agenda is approved. That brings us to today's agenda, and we had a couple of requests that would require suspending the rules. The first has to do with a new version of the Five-Year Homeless Housing Assistance Act grant agreement between the City of Spokane, Spokane County, um, and Salvation Army on the Way Out Shelter. Um, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
They're second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, suspend the rules for purposes of adjusting the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, the rules are suspended. Um, Mr. Ormsby, would you like to just discuss what you sent us a little bit, uh, earlier today? And then we'll entertain a motion to substitute that version.
Um, certainly. And, um, and Arian Schmidt, who's been, uh, a project coordinator on this project, is here as well. The change in the document that came today just relates to the COVID protocol, uh, that would be applicable to, uh, this facility for the isolation, uh, portion of the facility that the regional health district has asked the Salvation Army to locate in the basement, uh, of the facility. And that was the change today. Last week, we circulated another version that had, and with red line changes, that dealt with a number of contract issues, uh, but did not, uh, impact any of the changes that had been made previously. The, the primary one being the removal of the Good Neighbor Protocol section that was in the previous agreement, and that, um, hasn't been included in this agreement. So, uh, the big change today just had to do with a contract administration matter, uh, that the county's taking responsibility for, working with the Salvation Army on, uh, with the regional health district. And if there's any other questions, uh, with Arian here, uh, we'd be happy to try to answer them. Councilwoman Strat.
So, if I understand this, the Good Neighbor, the, the specifics of the Good Neighbor Agreement were taken out, and now it just says that it, it would be a regional Good Neighbor Agreement and that, that would be included once that regional agreement is, um, passed or is accepted.
Yes, that's the change.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just really confused on the changes that went into this. But, um, so who, what entities would approve a regional Good Neighbor Agreement? Which entities would be responsible for overseeing that? What's gonna be the process for engaging these, these entities in forming this? Since it's now beyond the city, I'm just, I'm not quite sure what that looks like. Is it Valley County and the city, and those three entities will have to approve it? Is it others? I'm just not quite certain on that.
Yeah, I, I think that is open. I, I think it's also gonna involve a discussion with the providers, because the providers, um, uh, most of these facilities are owned by the providers, but they get contracts from either the city or the county to provide services. So, the providers are going to need to be a part of that discussion, too. And there was a commitment at the regional leadership meeting to work on this collaboratively. Uh, but I think different, the Good Neighbor Agreement concept means different things to different people. So, I think, uh, that there will need to be a discussion on exactly what would be included in, um, such an agreement. And everyone's committed to having that discussion. Um, and I suspect that would be convened, although I wasn't at the meeting, I suspect that process would be convened by the regional leadership council, which involves the city, the county, uh, Spokane Valley, and, uh, providers attend that meeting, um, as well, but I don't know if they're members of that group.
So, who, who from the city sits on the regional leadership council?
Uh, the mayor and council president.
Okay, so it'd be up to the mayor and the council president in consultation with Ali and the county to formulate a Good Neighbor Agreement?
No, I, I think-
Well, to begin the, to begin the process.
The city would, city council would still approve it. So, it's just that there'd be a negotiation. And really, it's-
Okay.
At that group, it's, it's staff people who are, so it would be something like you saw in the last agreement that was taken out because we didn't finish up that conversation. So, it'd be that specific. Um, and then it would come to city council for approval, just like this agreement's coming to city council for approval. So.
Okay.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Councilwoman.
I thought that's what we had been having was conversations and trying to come to an agreement on what the Good Neighbor Agreement looks like over these past weeks, uh, actually since back in July. So, to have these changes, um, I'm gonna say for, be so fluid at the last minute, it's, it's really, uh, unsettling to me. And I, and I am disturbed because the Way Out Shelter is a good gate. Now, I want to remind us that the administration that we all heard said there would not be any load barrier bits in that shelter. That was, has been said multiple times, uh, on many Zoom meetings and in the public. And the holdup is not council on this, is the administration in working out this Good Neighbor Agreement. So, I just wanna put that back out there. We've approved the funding. It was based on the Good Neighbor Agreement as to when that funding would be released.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so on that point, uh, and that's the next point I had, I, I don't see anything in the operating agreement that addresses the use, full use of the building. Um, and I, and so I'm, I'm not entirely, so we're taking out the Good Neighbor stuff. We may or may not have an agreement on that down the road. But then we're also not gonna have any protections. What I can see, and maybe I'm wrong and I missed it and it's in there, but, uh, there's no protections on the use of the, of the basement in particular. Um, and I read a quote just the other day in the spokesman talking about not wanting to lose the ability to use that as a, as an emergency shelter. So, I guess I'm not entirely sure where that stands, uh, but that is my, my biggest concern at this point.
Arian, go ahead.
Yes, and, um, all of this is well warranted. I just learned about the minor edits to this agreement literally this morning during the B O C C update. Um, and to separate out the two threads of conversation, from what I understand, um, the county made these changes because of the CARES funding that has been allocated, um, to this building for the very reason that Councilmember Cathcart was talking about, to further restrict the use of the basement as related to arrangements between the health district and Spokane County for ongoing isolation and quarantine. So, they actually, um, from what I understand, just for their own, um, reporting reasons, because CARES was used, um, for, um, a large aspect of the brick and mortar of this building, in addition to other funds, of course, um, that was actually a further, um, uh, specification that was needed to be had, um, separate from, um, what's going on with the Good Neighbor Agreement. So, I wanted to clarify that it's actually more restrictive language now than it was even a week and a half ago when, when we briefed you. Um, I can share a little bit more of what I know that's going on for the Good Neighbor Agreement, or we can kinda leave that for a separate discussion. It's totally your, your preference. It's totally your preference.
Go ahead and share.
From what I understood, when I did share with you a couple of weeks ago, there was a real resonance from City Council's conversation that the Good Neighbor construct was actually bigger than any one provider, and that we have a number of new shelters coming on board, that we really want to make sure there's a good common cadence. You know, Cannon, you know, standing up on the 24-hour, the young adult shelter coming on board, and that there were a lot of things that we wanted to make sure could be applied to all providers. And so having the level of detail in this one related to just a little plot of land would have made it more difficult to make an overarching document rather than referencing what is agreed upon regional-wide for this document to abide by. That way, we didn't have to do contract amendments and things like that if certain words or terms were updated to this MNO agreement if by default inherited the agreement as it evolved. So that was the thought, so I just wanted to share that with you. And it doesn't have to be the informal work group that comes up with this. It could be the COC Executive Group, this body. It really is whoever wants to own the momentum, like Council Wilkerson had mentioned.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
And I just wanted to say, when we started talking about the Good Neighbor Agreement, we were hoping it would have been a template to use for all of our other shelters. That was really the impetus of putting that in there to start this conversation and pilot something out the door. So here we are again with empty-handed, for lack of a better term, and the frustration. And again, we want that Way Out Shelter to be open. They're running behind times, you know? Those people are not being served. But the miscommunication that we've had from the administration about the services that's going to be provided and the Good Neighbor Agreement and what's going to be there really kind of has been on them, and it really hasn't been on council. We've been pretty specific. We're willing to fund with this in place.
Councilmember Stratton.
I guess I'm just cutting to the chase here. This all, if we were really trying to incorporate, if we were really trying to, or listening to the concerns of the neighborhood, and I agree, that Good Neighbor Agreement would be a template. But all that we would have to do, and I'm not an attorney, but when the Salvation Army defines what a Way Out Shelter is, part of that definition for a Way Out Shelter would include, the Way Out Shelter does this and this and this. We don't serve night-by-night shelter clients. I mean, to me, that would be the easiest way to fix this, is just put that in the definition of what the Way Out Shelter is and add a sentence similar to that. I would feel better. But I don't feel good about all the work and the talk that we've had, and we're still kind of nowhere.
Arian.
I'm happy to bring up in the document the scope that does articulate that. So if you, if it needs to be written a little bit differently, but actually, it does state that right now in the scope definition. If you want us to bring that up, or Mike, if you want to elaborate?
No, it does provide what a definition, and it references the COC plan, the definition of the Way Out Shelter and the services that it's intended to provide. I would concede, though, it doesn't say that's all that's going to be in that facility. But the other specific item referenced in the facility is the Regional Health District's request for the isolation facility, and that's also referenced in the agreement. So those two uses are referenced in the agreement, and the restrictions that are applicable to each of those are in there as well.
Yeah, and just again, to give some context, I think, from at least where I've been sitting, there's three issues that have been brought up today. One is the Good Neighbor Agreement. And my recollection of our last meeting about that is we heard from some council members that said, hey, let's just reference the Good Neighbor Agreement. And frankly, the Salvation Army, in the language that's in there right now, they're agreeing to an agreement that hasn't been made yet. So it is something the county and the city would come up with, and they're sort of agreeing to it. The challenge was, no one knew how many more weeks it was going to take to work out the Good Neighbor Agreement. And it's getting cold, and they want to get people served. So that was the workaround on that challenge, was just Salvation Army would agree that whatever the county and city came up with for a Good Neighbor Agreement, they were agreeing to it. So that's one issue. Second issue is the issue of, is there, who's going to be served by the Salvation Army? Is it transitional housing, or is it night-by-night low-barrier shelter? And it doesn't, as Arian Schmidt says, it says that who's going to be served is the transitional. There is not a statement that says nobody ever will be served in the low barrier. But again, Salvation Army has been pretty clear that they don't have any desire to do that intent. But the third piece is the new piece, and that's the isolational component in the basement. And if I understand that correctly, that would be open to the Health District using for anyone who needed isolation services. It's not just the Way Out Shelter people. The original agreement was, the Way Out would preserve up to 5% of their beds in the basement if they needed that for anything, COVID or anything. But that's like three people. And if I understand this new language, it allows the Health District to place people from, who aren't at the Way Out Shelter, if they need isolation services. Is that your understanding, Arian, of what that language does? That's what it sounds like to me.
My understanding is it allows the opportunity to do such that under spoken Health District advisement, correct? That it can be used for expansion and isolation and quarantine.
Right, from other places. So, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that the Health District was not just considering the Way Out Shelter as a possible isolation site, but other locations as well. And I don't know to what extent that may be true or how in-depth they've been looking at other locations. But if they decide not to use this for isolation, and it doesn't go on that path, what happens then?
I, it just, they use it for other things, but not for low-barrier shelter. That's, they don't have any plans to do that. They are, as it turns out, they are using some studio apartments that the Salvation Army has over on Indiana for isolation currently. So, but I don't, I wasn't behind this new language, so I don't know. But that's my assumption, is that they want to create some more options in case we have a crisis, a health crisis, that they could use that space for isolation for people who aren't residents of the Way Out Shelter. But, but they haven't discussed that with the regional leadership group. Arian.
There is a weekly meeting on Thursdays between providers, the Health District, Spokane County, and then CHHS has an open attendee, for which we've done exactly what Councilmember Cathcart spoke about. There were about six different sites that were kind of being vetted. As Council President Beggs said, the current regional isolation and quarantine site is on the Indiana campus at TSA. And this designation would be for additional capacity if and when that is needed for appropriate populations. But believe it or not, you know, it's really hard to find a good fit for regional isolation and quarantine. And the goal is to have it expand beyond COVID if needed, because there are 51 communicable diseases that they monitor. My understanding is that this would still be reserved for 5% minimum by the Way Out Center. And once again, there is absolutely zero operational funding to go for anything but Way Out Center operations at that site in this contract.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the topic? It's still not on our agenda yet, but just checking. Yes, Councilmember Stratton.
Council President, I think it's been, has it been moved and seconded?
No.
I just want to reiterate that the concern that we're hearing from the neighborhood is the, number one, the problems they've had in the past. But the biggest one I'm hearing right now is, and the one that I feel, is again, that we, there's no, I'm not hearing of any great plans right now for what we're going to do with people out in the cold freezing in winter weather. And there always tends to be this, this response that's, you know, last minute, that we've got to open something up, we've got to get those beds out there. And that's how it happens. So again, I think that's my big concern. That's the neighborhood's concern, is that there's, we're going to let this slide, and then it's going to be cold, and we've got to open up something. And then the next thing we know, the deal's been made, and we've got this Way Out Shelter being used as a warming center. And I think that's what is, still remains very, very confusing to me, as it does some of those activists in the neighborhoods who are really watching this issue.
Now, I guess I'll ask Mr. Ormsby, even, that has been a request from at least a couple of council members over the weeks and months, is having language in the agreement that says, as long as the city's funding the Way Out Shelter functions, that they're not going to use any part of the building for low-barrier shelter. Has that, has that been attempted to be negotiated? Or what's the status on that?
To be real honest with you, based on the study session we had, we had understood that what the council wanted, and again, the direction was pretty nonspecific, was to just take it out of this agreement in its entirety, which is what we did, and circulated that, and asked for any comments or suggestions to the contrary. And I have to say, Council, we didn't receive any. So we did not push beyond what we thought the sense of the meeting was two weeks ago, to just take that reference out in the agreement, and reference that we would, that we would work on a construct going forward. So, no, I have to say, we didn't specifically push that. What we did see was a, an agreement by, or a staple by the Salvation Army about how they intended to use the facility. And it didn't include low-barrier shelter.
Council President.
Councilmember Mum.
I'll make a motion to amend the item with the new language, just to get this started. We've talked about this for almost half an hour. We need to make a decision.
So you-
Second, this is Laurie.
And so I just, I might have missed it. But what's the language that you want to amend it?
The language that was proposed.
Which, and I'm just not tracking. So are you, are you saying, is your motion to substitute the version? Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, okay.
All right, so that's been moved and seconded to substitute the version that was circulated today. Is there any further discussion? Well, it's a little more, it's substituted and placed on tonight's consent agenda. That's, I think, what needed to happen, is that? I'm checking with the clerk, because it wasn't on the agenda, or was it?
It's not on the agenda yet.
Okay. So the motion, if you accept the motion, Councilmember Mum and Councilmember Kinnear, is to place the version circulated this afternoon on this evening's consent agenda? Or is that in order to move-
Correct.
-the discussion forward? Okay. And Councilmember Kinnear?
Yes.
Seconded.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of placing the agreement on tonight's consent agenda, as set out this afternoon's version, indicate by saying aye, and please raise your hand. Okay.
Aye.
Aye. And were you an aye, Councilmember Kinnear?
Yes.
Okay. And those opposed to placing it on the agenda this evening, indicate by saying aye, raise your hand?
No.
All right, so that's five to two. So it's on the consent agenda.
Council President.
Yes.
Can we take that separately, please?
Yeah, I was just, that's what I was just going to suggest. So we'll take that a separate vote, but still do it at briefing at this point. Okay. And I had a request, if you, on tonight's agenda, other part of the agenda, on hearings on the Capital Improvement Plan update for 2022 through 2027. I circulated a version yesterday, and then the administration suggested some slight changes in language that I circulated today. And it would make it clear that ARP is not the designated source of funding for anything in the Capital Improvement Plan, and that any vehicle purchases have to follow the municipal code. And so I'm looking for a motion to substitute the previously filed version with the one that was circulated this afternoon.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Wilkerson, seconded by Councilmember Mum. Any discussion about the motion to substitute? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right.
Nay.
One, oh, six to one, then? All right. All right, that's all the agenda changes. And then now bring us to the consent agenda. And we're taking that last, number 14 separately.
There were two more motions for substitution. Ordinance C 36127, this one is regarding the Spokane Employees Retirement System. And they were just format changes.
All right.
And then Ordinance C 36132 under First Reading Ordinances.
Okay, so, thank you. So looking at-
Move to accept substitutions on both.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the substitutions indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right, those are also substituted, thank you. Now we're for the consent agenda, except for item 14.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchase from Traffic Safety Supply Incorporated, Portland, Oregon, a perforated square steel tubing not to exceed $90,000. Number two, value blanket renewal, number two of two with Core &amp; Main Spokane for gate valves for a final three-year term, $225,000. Number three, value blanket renewal, number one of four with Wemco Incorporated Spokane for the as-needed purchase of mechanical OEM parts for the refuse crane system at the Waste Energy Facility from December 1, 2021 through November 30, 2022. Annual cost not to exceed $135,000, including tax. Number four, contract renewal, number two of two with Intellect Incorporated for 15 months of professional services in support of master data management solution implementation, $474,100, including tax. Relates to special budget ordinance C 36130, which will be considered during the 6:00 PM legislative session. Number five, contract renewal with Alcohol Monitoring Systems Incorporated, SCRAM Systems for electronic monitoring services, $264,000. Number six, contract with G.I.S. Water Solutions Incorporated to conduct evaluation of the well electric site for groundwater supply extension, $631,700. Number seven, recommendation to list on the Spokane Register of Historic Places, A Knights of Pithias Hall, 1203 West Riverside Avenue, and B River Falls Tower, 1224 West Riverside Avenue. Number eight, contract amendment renewal, number two of four with online cleaning services, Marysville, California, for boiler blast cleaning services from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. Annual cost not to exceed $300,000, including tax. Number nine, contract renewals with A, number two of four with Bay Valve Services LLC, Longview, Washington, for onsite valve repair services at the Waste Energy Facility from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, not to exceed $325,000, including tax. B, number one of four with Faust Fabrication Company, Colville, Washington, for as-needed off-site grapple repairs for the Waste Energy Facility from December 1, 2021 through November 30, 2022. Annual cost not to exceed $85,000 plus tax. Number 10, contract renewals, numbers two of four with Wemco Incorporated Spokane for A, crane, hoist, trolley, and lifeline preventative maintenance and inspections at the Waste Energy Facility from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. Annual cost not to exceed $60,000, including tax. B, bridge crane maintenance and inspections at the Waste Energy Facility from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. Annual cost not to exceed $100,000, including tax. 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, annual cost not to exceed $100,000, including tax. Number 11, contract with Knight Construction and Supply Incorporated, Deer Park, Washington, for mechanical repairs at the waste energy facility, from November 1, 2021 through October 31, 2022, not to exceed $2,200,000, including tax. Number 12, report to the mayor of Penney, N.A., claims and payments approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through October 29, 2021, total $7,743,006.41. With Parks and Library claims approved of the respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $6,020,214.60. B payroll claims approved obligations through October 30, 2021, $8,23,311.40. Number 13, city council meeting minutes for October 25, 2021. Item number 14 will be considered separately.
All those in favor of adopting and approving the consent agenda as read indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. Can you read item number 14?
Number 14, five-year homeless housing assistance act grant agreement between the city of Spokane, Spokane County, and the Salvation Army to provide programming for the way out shelter, a bridge housing program, $2,500,000.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye, and go ahead and raise your hand if you can.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And councilmember Kinnear, I got that as an aye. All those opposed, nay?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, that passes five to two. All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting this afternoon. We'll see everyone back at 6:00 PM. Thanks, we're adjourned.
Thank you.